Survive, tenacity, problem solve.
Provide a family atmosphere of caring, community garden, welcome guests, stay connected, get it done. Garden worship, feed the poor, vicar from outside, and the garden is exceptional.
Oh, vicar from outside.
View from outside.
Oh, view.
Oh, the view from outside.
We do also have a vicar who comes in. We do have Steve, did you mention like, Steve, yeah, Steve is great, Steve is great, Steve.
Oh, the garden is exceptional, thank you. It is a beautiful garden this year.
Oh, it is.
It is the most beautiful garden we've ever had. I've never seen such beautiful produce go anywhere.
So, I'm gonna ask a question. What did, just popcorn it, and we're only gonna take a minute. What did you hear?
Out.
The same thing.
The same thing.
Community.
Yeah. That's okay. Okay. That's good, thank you. Now it's my turn.
Yes, it is.
So, we are gonna talk about the life cycle of church. I would like to describe what I have up here, because some of it's kind of small. But basically, what happens is, you know, everything comes from something. So, it is birthed. We were birthed as a church that came from Trinity Episcopal Church. So, that's where we came from. We were a mission church from them. And then, formation is who's our, what's our identity? Who are we at our faith level? What are we here for? Who is our neighbor? And how are we related to our neighbor? That's our formation. Stability, fruit, we have fruit, when you're stable, you have fruitful and sustainable ministry, institutionally and spiritually. It's a time when the elements of organizational life fit together. Money, vision for ministry, property, people. Stability can be a place of health, or it can tip into feeling stagnant or stale, where growth is stalling and new opportunities are being ignored. This tip sometimes experiences, is experienced as membership plateaus, and then follows with declining membership. The decline is characterized by a fall off in number, decline in energy, fear, blame, confusion in the system, a focus on small things rather than central issues, and disintegration is marked by conflict, hopelessness, feeling stuck, the inability of internal leaders to affect change, and ultimately, what can come from that is death. Now, there are some arrows going down here. So, if you're a healthy church, which is basically here, we're healthy, there's ongoing renewal. So, you're gonna see this kind of rotation of formation, and identifying and working together. When you start to get between stability and stagnant, you're still working with ongoing renewal, and then revitalization. So, it's working to make some changes that can occur. But again, if you're doing this, it kind of creates that, the cycle, creates a different cycle. When you're in decline, you get to choose, are you gonna redevelop? So, there's this redevelopment phase. Again, decline, and we have fixed that whole cycle. When you get to disintegration, you need outside intervention to help you get back to formation to start again. So, any questions about that? I'm gonna ask you to actually get up out of your chairs, form a line, and I'm gonna have you mark on this piece of paper where you think we are, as a congregation. And I'm gonna have you all use a red marker. So, when you're ready, come on up and mark where you think we are.
And how do you want us to mark?
An X is fine. So, X marks your spot. And if you have, have questions, don't hesitate, you're asked.
I'm notoriously negative.
No, it's appreciative inquiry day.
Oh, I just got it on me. I am, I'm the negative Nancy. That's an insult to all Nancys everywhere.
I know. I know, I know.
I do too.
I don't know anyone in Karen that is a core of Karen.
No, I'm not.
Did I?
All right.
Yes. I probably did a better thing.
But you're right. Where you wanna be.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
I'll be here.
Yeah, obviously. So. I'm just looking forward to end of January. When somebody else is talking, it just makes it worse.
All right. I'm gonna have some water for you. I've got some. Yeah.
Good.
Good.
Still.
Good, it doesn't do any good.
No. Thank you for your feedback. So now, we're gonna tell you a little bit about what's going on here at St. Albans, so that you can think about this a little bit more. So, a month or so ago, you should have received a letter in the mail asking for financial assistance for our capital campaign. And we are doing that. We requested this money because, A, we need to have matching money for the CBCP grant, but B, because we don't have enough resources to take care of the things that we want to do downstairs, and do the one really important thing that will benefit the church, which is replace our dishwasher, worth between of like $4,000. So, or $10,000, depending on how you do that. So, it's a large number, and that's why it hasn't been taken care of. That's why we do a lot of hand washing or paper products, which isn't always a good thing. But, so we've asked you to consider how you can help by providing a financial commitment to the church specifically for this work that we're doing. We ask for, because, because, you know, why not be clever and match a dollar for dollar? You know, $10,800 is what we've received, what we're receiving from these grants, so why not try to match it? And if we don't need all that money, we will take the excess, and we will put it into our declining rapidly financial budget for our operating expenses. So, that's what that's about. And so, if you've seen downstairs, you've seen work, you have, you understand more about the hope that we have for that.
And to talk a little bit more about where we specifically are with the downstairs project. As I mentioned, for those that were downstairs, we have a technology upgrade in the works, so that we can upgrade our Wi-Fi in this building. Currently, it functions in the library, in the office area, and maybe down at this end of the room. You know, we can't use it in the sanctuary, that's why we've never had live services online. We don't have that capacity. So, while we couldn't do that, we were recording them, getting them online ourselves. Okay, so that's background on the technology. The work on the garden level, that's what we're calling the basement, thanks to Bethany, because there are windows, you know? You look outside, it is a garden level. So, we've, we still need to complete the shelving, painting that you saw us working on, Gail and I, new carpet for the center area, and then furnishings for the shared work area. We envision that the renters will furnish their own space. We're not providing furnishings. For the specific projects that we are doing with the, from the grant for CBCP, I mentioned early, we now have to go back to the vendor that quoted the work, and say, we wanna get the installation of the cameras, the ADA compliant door, and the keyless entry system. So, we'll be working towards that, and we are actively recruiting renters. We have had thoughts that we had a good potential, that has not come to fruition yet, but that individual is Ashley, as mentioned earlier, she's with the Community Development Corporation of the area, and she wrote back to us the other day that she would like to sponsor an open house for our space, to bring in community members, so that people can see it. So, that is on our, as soon as we can get the space looking, get those shelves done, I think we can schedule something for that, like, as soon as possible. And we're in conversation with their, Devington Communities. I've got a call with their president, just reiterating what's going on here. They're aware of it, but we have an upcoming meeting in September, and early September, and I'll, I can be stressing with the folks there, that we are actively seeking renters for our space, and anything that anyone else can do is helpful. And then, we're gonna have, as far as where we are today financially, Marky's gonna give us an update of where we are, the numbers, the numbers.
Financially, our backs are against the wall.
Can you come over and search the room? Just recording, I guess.
Okay. So, I will repeat that. Financially, our backs are against the walls. And we have been in this trajectory probably since I've been treasurer, and I was trying to remember how long I've been treasurer, it's between 10 and 12 years.
2010.
Okay. So, anyway, just, just some brief historical information here. In 2014, our pledge commitment for the year was $118,000. In 2016, our pledge commitment for the year was $104,500. In 2018, our pledge commitments for the year were $91,240. In 2020, our pledge commitments for the year, and that year, there were 25 pledges, and 2020, two years ago, it was $89,000. In 2022, this year, we had 20 pledges for $65,000 for the year. So, you can see how this has gone down. And in 2014, I didn't have the numbers of pledges each year, but I know when I first became treasurer, we were having about 40 to 45 people pledge a year, and now we're down to 20 people making a pledge a year. So, our current financial situation, we had projected this year a budget deficit of $50,000, and we did not build in, we did a very realistic budget, we did not put anything in, assuming we were gonna get renters in the rooms downstairs. So, our current rental income comes from three AA groups, and buttermilk mountain, that makes the dog biscuits here several times a month. So, right now, find information, I'm not here. So, right now, our average monthly fixed expenses run just under $11,000. And those include buildings and grounds expenses, lawn mowing, when we need to, you know, maintenance on our heating cooling system, things like that. That's $3,500. That includes snow removal in the winter, and also our utilities. Our administrative expenses monthly are seven thou, just under $7,500. And that includes halftime rector salary and pension, and apportionment, which is what we pay the diocese each month, and they set that each year for each congregation. And I wanna note that we have been unable, or we have not paid our apportionment the last two months, and the diocese is aware of this because of our financial situation. And this year's apportionment is $1,724 a month. Also included in the administrative is internet, website, software, and our internet expense, monthly internet expense will be going up significantly when we get the new internet installed, hopefully, in the next 60 days, it'll go from about $70 a month to probably between $250 and $300 a month. So, with fixed monthly expenses of $11,000, the income that we can count on coming in each month, I said we had 20 pledges for this year, and of those 20 pledges, four have been paid in full already. 12 members, 12 of those 20, pay monthly, so I can count on that monthly income. And that monthly income from those 12 pledges is $4,240. And then, we also have the known rental income, which is the three AA groups in the buttermilk mountain, and that income is $440 a month. And then, we have diocese and aid or assistance, which is $1,250 a month. So, the income that we can count on each month is around $6,000, and our expenses each month are $11,000. Now, so there's, there's the gap, and if you read the financial health article in our monthly newsletter, you will see that every month, we're between a $2,000 and a $5,000 deficit, which has put us at a $20,000 deficit right now for the year. And, what was I gonna say here? We've been on this trajectory, you know, for 10 years, and we've, we've taken action to kind of assist this. We've taken measures, and through the years, and it kind of started with, as far back, we eliminated Mary Toby's position, which was our secretary, and we paid benefits and health insurance for her. And then, after that, prior to Debbie coming, we opened our facility up to renters. We had Diana Singleton, that was a psychologist, psychiatrist. We had Grace and Mercy, another small African American church that was with us until just after the pandemic, or in the midst of the pandemic, and we had Worthmore Academy for four or five years downstairs. So, then, we needed some major, major things addressed. We needed a new HVAC unit, we needed to repair a parking lot, we needed to replace the entry area cement, it was cracked, it was a danger to our parishioners coming to church, so we took out a revolving loan with the diocese for $43,000 in 2019 that we're paying off over a 10-year period. We've renegotiated service contracts, we've changed our trash pickup to, instead of weekly to twice weekly.
Twice a month.
I'm sorry, twice a month, from once, from once a week to twice a month, thank you. We have not replaced our organist after we lost him, so that was a cost savings. And ironically, as it is, COVID proved to be a benefit for us, and really helped us out for a two-year period, because we got $18,200 in PPP money that we did not have to pay back, and additionally, we got apportionment relief from the diocese, and pension relief for Debbie's pension from the church pension group. So, that, that really helped us out. But, like I said, right now, our back's against the wall, and the whole money piece is tied to a membership, you know? We're not getting the money in because we don't have the membership, and so that's where we are.
And meeting scheduled?
Oh, yes, and Brendan O'Sullivan Hale, who's the canon, and I forget his official title, but he oversees kind of the treasurers in each of the churches, and he contacted me and said, and recently, we've requested two donations from our investment account.
Withdrawals.
Withdrawals. When I first started, we had a savings account, and that savings account dissolved years ago. We do have an investment account with the diocese, and as of the first of this year, it had $35,000 in it, but with the state of the economy, it's, you know, it's lost money, as everybody's investment accounts have lost money. And then, we borrowed, we transferred $5,000 of it in July to our checking account to help cover expenses in July, and recently requested an additional transfer that the vestry votes on, and that money will be coming shortly to help pay expenses for the coming month, September. So, our investment account is now down to about $22,000. So, anyway, after reviewing and seeing, I submit our monthly financial reports to the diocese, and Brendan contacted me out of concern, and we are, Debbie had, prior to that, had requested with the bishop's admin, administrator, a meeting for Joan, myself, and Debbie, to talk to them and find out, you know, what our options are, let them know exactly where we are right now financially and membership wise, and we're hoping that that's gonna happen in the next several weeks.
And there's one other thing that changed, but you didn't mention.
Yes.
I went half time.
Oh, I thought I did mention that, in measures, well, I did mention it somewhere, but in the buildings and grounds, we pay a half time rector, so, yeah. But she is doing buildings and grounds too, because we don't have a buildings and grounds person.
But it's important, I mean, there have been sacrifices for, for a lot of things for us to be able to do what we're doing. And, and so, we, while we're trying to keep this as appreciative as we can, there's truth. And if we don't tell you the truth, and we don't tell you the reality of our circumstances, we can't be appreciative, because then we're lying. And so, who we are is a lot of these things. We are all of these things that we just listed on that page, we are also in a financial situation. So, I would like you to now come back up here and remark this with where you think we are. So, did anything you learned?
What you just heard.
Did anything that you just heard change what you believe your mark should be?
Yeah.
So, come on up and.
We're not sustainable.
We are.
Not as we are.
And we're gonna do black, because it's been a change. And we're not done, but we're gonna just, we're gonna just take a minute.
Take a minute to do that.
Mine didn't look very good.
Yep.
There's a movie called Reality, but is?
Is there? I always say that, I didn't know there was a movie. Is it on Netflix?
Anybody else wanna come and change your mark? I know you do it on a contest. But there's reality. Reality, we're in this. No, we're not gonna do it. So, Bethany just made a really, really, really important concept, comment. First of all, she put, she was here, she put herself here with a dollar figure next to it, because she says, we are still doing all of these things. And that's where the appreciative inquiry comes in. This is where the appreciation comes in, is we are doing so much, maybe we aren't doing it as big as some people, or whatever. Robin?
I just wanna say that a lot of the declining numbers and the corresponding decline pledges, or a lot of people have gotten burnt out trying to continue to do all this middle stuff, and have just left.
Given up.
They've given up, you know? I mean, it's not like we're the only church in Indianapolis, you can go anywhere. And, and so, you know, the thing is, this is not sustainable, and pretending that we're this big church, and, and trying to do all of this, it, it's, it's, you know, we gotta get our heads out of the sand and face the facts.
Okay, so, thinking of that.
Giving that.
You're gonna take a post-it note again. I think you should have enough on your table, in your, and even when we have them. I would like you to now write down on each, on your piece of paper, what are your three concrete wishes for St. Albans' future? And so, concrete, you mean, you can say, there's, you could be really ethereal and appear, I don't want you here, I want you meat and bones, meat, you know, meat and potatoes, not, you got meat and potatoes, we can eat meat and bones. There. I'll give you a couple minutes. If there is blank paper, if you need vigor, there's blank paper on your table, and you can fill that out, and we'll tape it up here, it's okay. Or use more, need more.
I can't spill, same way.
Three wishes. Your mom or sugar daddy, give me one.
Winning the lottery is not.
Yeah, exactly. Did you get the sense that there was a former treasurer? Three wishes. Three wishes. Oh, wait, it did, yeah. They're on the door.
I'm like, I'm surprised you write it, so people can see.
I understand. All right, can I put it up there for you? Anybody else got one that's ready?
Anybody else want? Done yet?
I am. That's only one, that's all I, look.
That's all right, one is better than none, three is great. Wishes. I'll take it for you, thank you, babe. Anybody else got one over here ready? You ready there?
I can't think of a third.
That's okay. You know, you know?
Thanks, Ellen.
You know, we get parking prints. Okay. Here we go. Anybody else have one? He's a little slow. Anybody else have one? Come on. Why don't you start, and we'll pick up together in a second. You got it there? There's one there? Thank you. Oh, I have a third one. Can I have my third? Sarah? Did you have my slipstool?
I had, I just thought of a third one.
Oh, she thought of a third one, yeah? Okay, just to kind of summarize here, we'll give you a listen, you'll have time to kind of converse during our lunch about this. Wishes, full-time Debbie, choir rector, fully rented basement, develop membership. Continuous services, Colin Bayarian continues, stay open. Continue to worship in sanctuary, all office space rented downstairs. Garden continues providing produce for food pantry, and marketplace. Younger congregation. More people doing work, bigger congregation. Building become a community center and not our responsibility, i.e. become renters. We become renters. Interesting.
That's what it sounds like. It says up pledges, you know, so like, you can sometimes hear, I up my pledge, up yours. Get more members, get renters. That we stay open, that we worship God every Sunday, that we serve our congregation. Options from the diocese to become sustainable individuals to fulfill leadership positions. Renters sustainability, membership growth. That we can, can. That we can consistently encourage new members to attend, that Deb can go back to full-time. Renters, more money from varied income, income sources, more people, doesn't need to mean members. That's really an important thing. Financial stability, more pledges, rentals, increased membership, financial stability, continued loving environment, and the return of game night and movie night.
Can I just add something here?
Yes.
More people, more pledges, that's a really nice thought, but if you look like what Margie was saying, the ten-year trajectory we've been on, it's not gonna be what's gonna get us through. We will be a dead church before that happens unless some of these other things can happen first.
But I don't know that that's what this conversation is about. Okay. This conversation, this question is, what are our three concrete wishes for our future? And not why they may not work. I'm just gonna... Yes, I mean, I think that's why I put more money, more people, because that doesn't necessarily need to mean, like, meet members.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just think that, you know, we basically, the people that are coming and contributing, you know, you, you can only get so much.
But this was, was, again...
And I'm, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm...
Back, back to our appreciative inquiry piece, this is the wishes part.
Okay. Right, so we are, because we just heard something that wasn't really pleasant, so now it's time to think about what's good. You know, what do we want, what do we hope for, right? So we're gonna put, we're gonna leave this here for right now, and we're, because we are, at the end, we're gonna take like the next five minutes, we're gonna take an extra few minutes of your time. And we are gonna just, we're gonna tell you how we feel. I feel hope.
There's always hope.
There's always hope. Might be all we have. You know why I see hope? Because there are people who come here every Tuesday and work out there in the heat, and we haul this stuff out, and we get out there and we meet our neighbors. And our neighbors come up and, what do they tell you? Somebody who's here, what do they tell you when you're, when you're selling them something?
I'm so glad to be here.
We love the collard greens.
I used to play baseball here. I'm so happy that you're here, that you're doing this. Thank you for this beautiful garden. It means so much to our neighborhood. It goes back to that meeting that we went, had in December of the neighbors and leaders telling us how important we are. So while it feels like, you know, we're looking for atta girls and atta boys from the, from the neighbors, right now we kind of need that, because we need that appreciation to be able to feel like we can get ourselves back up and out of some of the stuff we're in the middle of. And the fact that so many of you come on Tuesday, Tuesdays and help us set up, sell, and take down, and you, and you engage with the neighbors is important. What we need to do more than that is invite them to help in other ways, if they can. I have faith in this community. Yes, you do! But I have faith in the people around these tables, but, and, and faith with the people who are not around these tables today. Because one thing that Margie may not have said very clearly is that you've been faithful. You've been financially faithful to this, to, to the community, to the church. You've been giving, you haven't given up financially. Some of you even increased your pledges, or maybe pledged for the first time for this year. And while those numbers seem like they keep going down and down and down, when we see that some of those pledges have increased and that you are faithfully giving, whether it's, whether you're here on a Sunday or not, because there are checks that come in the mail, you are faithful to this community because you believe in this community of faith, this church, these people who you have devoted years to. All of us have devoted years to this community. Even Melissa, who's been here only the shortest amount of time, has devoted years to this community. And then there's commitment. I see your commitment to this place. And it, and I'm, I mean, I've been so committed to making sure that we can have the things that we need to be able to get us rented. I mean, I've been pushing buttons and making phone calls and having meetings and doing the things and going to training I wanna go to, 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 to learn stuff so that we have reasons to be here that are beyond ourselves. It's why we pray every single Sunday, and it's in our, in our prayer list. We're praying for the, the leaders of St. Albans, which I changed that this time, and I said, pray for all of us, so, because we can't do this alone. And we all need to be a part of finding other people to take this journey with us.
As Barb said, yes, I'm a part of this community. I live two streets over, and I've lived in this community for a long, long time.
Years.
For a long time. And I came to St. Albans from another Episcopal church, 'cause I'm a lifelong Episcopalian. And when I moved, I came to the closest one. I've been here for a long time. I've seen it go through the changes. And as Margie said today, we have been on this path for some time. We were there, the brink was there, we always kept from going over. Now, just making it's not gonna do it at this point, but I do have hope. I do have hope because I think we're this close to making something real downstairs. But we gotta get through this period of time that we don't have this rent that we need very, very much. Growth is wonderful, growth has gotta be part of it. But my hope is that we can still maintain this parish family, which has been part of my life for most of my adult life. The faith, you gotta have faith, that's why I come to church, that's why I praise God, that's why I'm here. And commitment, well, I retired in nineteen and became a part-time volunteer. So I am committed, and I know others are committed, and I'm willing to continue the work. But we've gotta figure out this, getting through this period right now.
Can I say something? Yep.
When I started coming here, it was before they had that fire. And the fire destroyed everything, and we grew from that, you know? We still picked ourselves up and, and, and made it. And so I encourage that we can do that again.
Thank you, thank you. So one of the things I'm gonna just... So when we talked to Mary, Mary was in our, Mary Slensky here was in our small group when we were working on what are our projects gonna be. We were talking about this model here, and she wanted to remind us...
At the core... We are, what is the most fundamental piece about being Christian?
We believe in resurrection.
We believe in resurrection. Even to the grave, we make our song, "Hallelujah." This is not the end. But you have to allow things to die, and y'all remember Bishop Kate? Resurrection only works on dead things. And it's hard to let go of the past. Doesn't mean you let go of the core, but it means they may look different because they're going to go through resurrection and be born looking like something new that will still incarnate the love of God in this place. So it's so, you know, this just seems such a hopeless thing, but maybe there's a momentum here that is truly allowing our faith to shine.
Thank you, I like that. Thank you. Yes. A pause is appropriate. So, yeah, so there are some things I can't, I'm having a really hard time emotionally saying. And, and because some of us have lost a lot of sleep. And we, even in the midst of that, we do believe in our resurrection. And we, and we do believe that we can be in a lot of different places here. We can all have different opinions. When I did this the first time, this is where I put us, right there. I still think that we have, we're, we're, we have parts of us who are here.
I think I had us first.
So we, we change as we learn and as we grow, and so your point of view being here today is to learn so that we can, if we need, if we're at this resurrection place, that we can resurrect. Or if we want, if we feel here, how are we gonna get outside intervention so that we can start again? So that's what we're here to do today, and that's what we're here to talk about today, why we did this. So what we're gonna do now is, um, you're gonna have two handouts. One of them, which one do you have?
I got...
Is the yellow?
I got the yellow.
The yellow one, I think, is the, is a commitment form. It is asking you what you are available, what you can do to help us through this next time. It is, it is a, there's a line asking, how much money are you willing to put into this right now? That is over and above your, your current budget.
We need another one, okay.
Or is it going to be, and then it's one for whether you can donate to the, to the process downstairs. Some of it is, can you physically do some things to help? Or what are you willing to do, how are you gonna open your mouth to the world and let them know what's going on? So if you can please fill that out, and we need your names on this because we want to, because we are being held accountable for what we say we're going to do.
And if you need more time than just this morning to do that, or this time together, just get it back as soon as you can.
Wait, Cecilia?
When we was doing that, um, debt to resurrection, and I don't know what the lady's name is.
Mary.
It comes to fruition, I think what we, the, what we are going through right now, in, in our financially, I think we need to die and re, re, re-resurrect, re-birth.
Okay. Well, you're gonna have an opportunity to write that down too, because you're, on a, on a salmon piece of paper, this is, they're not, you don't have to say your name on this one unless you want to.
Optional.
It's optional. Tell us what you learned today. Tell us what you, what you, you know, just answer those questions.
What is your greatest hope, and overall, what did you think of today?
This is a...
And if you've got ideas.
And this basket will be by the door, you can put, because they're two different colors, they can all go in the same basket, and we can separate them and look at them. And, Margie?
I just, I, I don't know, maybe this isn't appropriate, but I just thought on the golden run sheet...
Oh, we're good, okay.
We need leadership in this church. I mean, should people indicate if they're interested in serving on Vestry or something like that?
That would be great.
That is a very critical piece of this whole thing as well.
Yes, yes, thank you for that, thank you for that, Margaret.
Yes.
If you put something on this, is that part of the capital campaign?
Well, it depends on how you respond.
Is this Yerda, Eric campaign?
There's, you know, it's the same campaign that's been advertised. That first one is the same one we talked about. If you've already made your payment, we're asking you to put that amount there just to reaffirm that that's what you did.
I'm gonna put this basket where you can put them right here, um, when you're ready. But we're gonna ask you to just pause for a minute, because we wanna get lunch going, and some people have to get out the door. So we're gonna have a closing prayer, and then at lunch, we're, if you would please, you know, focus maybe a little bit on your appreciative wishes at your table. Talk about your wishes for this congregation, and what your hopes are for this congregation. Let's try to keep it as positive as we possibly can. And if, and this is where the salmon sheet, if you did this after lunch, it might be, might be more beneficial for you, because you might have more things that you glean from those conversations. But before you leave, if you could do that, that'd be great. But we're gonna do the prayer, and then we're gonna get lunch out for you. So, the Lord be with you. And also with you. Let us pray. This is a prayer for guidance. Direct us, oh Lord, in all our doings with your most gracious favor, and further us with your continual help, that in all our works begun, continued, and ended in thee, we may glorify your holy name, and finally, by your mercy, obtain everlasting life through Jesus Christ our Lord and... Amen. And a prayer for grace. Holy one, you bring us together to learn and to grow, but usually, one of the greatest places where we learn and grow in all this is when we eat together. Bless the food that we are about to receive, bless the hands that prepare it, and for those who will be cleaning up after it, and give us nourishment to do all of the things that you have given us to do, even when we feel like we might not have all of our stuff together. Help St. Albans to do what needs to be done, and to be the place of people who are here to serve you with gladness and willingness of heart. Amen. Thank you for your time and for being here, and please do enjoy the food. If you have dietary restrictions, let us know. And I, there's some things I've been prepared for that.